Celine or Celine?
Celine.
Celine, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I am a city resident, a mother, and I am part of the educational community within Washington County. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of children. I work with children every day, children full of potential who wake up eager to learn and grow, whose parents work tirelessly to give them a better life. They are now losing focus. Their innocence is being shattered by the constant fear that their parents or loved ones might be taken away due to the ICE activity tearing through our city. How can they learn hope or dream when all they feel is fear? They are experiencing trauma. Have you heard of ACES? Adverse Childhood Experiences? ACES are potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood. These experiences can trigger toxic stress, which negatively affects brain development and increases the risk of health and mental health problems in adulthood. These traumatic events involving ICE threaten to mold their entire lives, impacting their health, their happiness, their future. Our children deserve better. They deserve a future filled with love, safety, and opportunity, not fear. As families prepare to face an unthinkable family separation, it is important to bring resources directly to the community. Ensure these services are accessible and affordable, including financial assistance. Some suggestions are: collaboration with consulates from other countries within our state to facilitate easier access to legal documents; offer legal services; offer notarization of documents; and assistance completing legal forms. To Chief Coleman, I would like to say, as a graduate of the HPD Citizen Academy, I left with the understanding that HPD takes seriously its duty to protect and serve its community. But we all know that no department is perfect. Make it clear how your department will follow through on citizen complaints and how you will hold officers accountable. Accountability is non-negotiable. Trust begins with honesty. Our children, our future generations, they are watching. They will look back in generations to come. They will see what we did during this moment in history. This moment demands our voice, our courage, our commitment in that we stay united, stay loud, stay strong, remain peaceful. But remain peaceful, but determined with unwavering resolve for our community as a whole. And part of that whole includes our immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you, Celine. Good job. Myra Contreras. You can come up and go on the right-hand side. And on deck is Michael, no last name. Dirk, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My heart is full of gratitude. My soul is full of fear, like the fear in this room. And I'm grateful for the emergency proclamation. I'm grateful for the response to what you heard two weeks ago. I'm grateful for our staff. I'm grateful for the journalists that are working here. I'm mostly grateful for our young people who are coming to us in their time of need, in our time of need, and their voices are being heard, voices like Manny's, who got pushed out unwillingly. It happened, and he's had a change on our community. I'm grateful for Ignacio, his teammate, who he came here to speak on behalf of. And I'm grateful for young Kimberly that sat here and poured her heart out. I'd like to ask, I'd like to say that I'm very grateful for those councilors that brought forward additional ideas. I thought the codification of our codes, which is a complex issue, but knowing that city buildings are covered by strict laws of behavior of who does what in those buildings, and that's accountability we need. I'm very grateful for Christian Salgado, not only for being on national television, doing a great job to speak for his heritage and his community, but also his idea about a civilian humanitarian body that would exist as a city construct that could go out to these stops. People like me, or these people, and all of these great moms and teachers and everyone coming forward could go and document. I urge you to make that a next step, both of those steps. As far as FLOC, as far as 911, as far as sharing DMV records, what are we doing? I haven't heard answers. I'm sure a work session will cover it. But I'm still hearing that cities are sharing data amongst each other unwillingly. We can't have that. ICE is just grabbing these people like they know where they are. People like Pablo Guzman Santoio, who got grabbed right before this meeting started in front of our beautiful White Rabbit TV highway, as his son is crying and one of our civilian citizens is running down the street filming, begging people for help. Horrifying scene happened while we were, just before we came in here. I'm not convinced we cannot approach them through our HPD and say, "Excuse me, gentlemen, officers, who are you? Can we see badges? We're not interfering. We just want to know who you are so we can document this." Once we do that, they are scared, and they will back down. I watched Kylie Delgado, an unknown hero to many, follow ICE officers all day, and she escorted them right out of town, blaring her PA system, putting herself at fear of arrest. I want to close by saying, our community is a lot like a grove of trees, a beautiful grove of trees. We stand together. We're connected at the roots, through the mycelium. Our young people like Manny and Ignacio keep us healthy. The taller ones, we have to give them shade and protection so that together we can live. And we either are going to rise and grow together, or we're going to fall. And if we fall, we're not coming back ever the way we were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, who was on deck, you can come up to the podium or the desk on the left. And Myra, you have three minutes.
Good evening, our number one Mayor Beach and council members. My name is Myra Contreras, and I am the proud owner of Myra's Cupcakes and More. Tonight, I am here on behalf of many local small businesses, but specifically Latino-owned businesses. Our community is facing a crisis, ladies and gentlemen, and we need your help. Over the past several months, we have experienced a severe drop in customers and revenue due to recent ICE activities in our area. Many businesses have reported a decline of 50, 60, and some, including mine, have seen a drop as high as 80%. As you can see in the information I have provided, each and one of you, no small business can survive with numbers like that. When small businesses hurt, our whole city feels it. By helping us stay open, you protect local jobs, preserve our community's identity, and strengthen Hillsborough's economic future. Future, ladies and gentlemen. But right now, many of us are struggling to keep our doors open. Tonight, I'm asking for your support in creating a parallel program, a small business recovery grant, or a limited forgivable loan fund to help cover essential operating expenses during this downturn. With even a small bridge of support, we can stabilize, recover, and continue to contribute to our city's economy. I cannot emphasize enough, you are our lifeline right now. Without your help, many of us will not only lose our business, but the dreams we built for our families and the community. Forty-eight seconds on the clock. On November 1st, 1987, I came into this world in Hillsborough, Oregon. I'm a Hillsboroughonian by heart, and I will be Hillsboroughonian until the day God comes and takes me. You, as my representative, as community's representative, I beg you, I urge you, we need you, because we give you guys color. We give you guys flavor. Come on, who doesn't like a good taco, right? We have a lot of that. But without us, there is no spice, and unfortunately, you will be bland. Thank you.
Thank you, Myra. Michael, hold up one second, please. I'd like to ask, Seren Truer? S-E-R-E-N, Seren? You can come right up there onto the desk on the right. And then on deck is Fernando Gutierrez. Michael, you have three minutes.
Good evening. It's funny, I am Venezuelan. It's very hard to see what's going on in this community. I came to the States looking for opportunity, and I'm privileged by that. I actually have papers, and now I'm a citizen. I'm a father, one child. And it's so hard to see what's going on. I'm able to speak here on behalf of my community, my friends, my family, because they cannot. And I hear everybody's concerned. I'm grateful for this community, for the people, the support all they have put into But coming from where I come from, I understand what it's like to lose faith in the government, what it's like to see authoritarianism rise. Democracy is fragile, and you guys are seeing it in real time. And if we just sit idle and just take Band-Aids and warm solutions, it will continue to rise, and it will trample every single one of you. It's not enough what we do, and it requires fast action. I appreciate the steps that you guys are taking to fund the CBOs and to help the communities. But you guys need to move faster. This will continue to happen. I like to focus on solutions, and like I said, I came here just to bring a better life for me and my family, to work, to just build relationships and contribute. We need to look into other methods on how to help. Current methods seem to be reactive to what's happening. As you hear from everybody here and the proposals you guys get, a lot of these solutions are reactive of what's happening. Might be too late to help the people who's being affected, and by the time funds goes into these CBOs, it might be too late to bring them back. I would like to take the remainder of the time to give you an idea, that I don't know if it's possible, but we should look into localized visa programs that can work with the corporates and the companies that are within your jurisdiction to incentivize programs that can offer this to those affected, and they can apply for, through the legal process, they can apply for visas. That way, they can remain in our communities without any risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Fernando Gutierrez, you can come up to the desk on the left-hand side of the room. And Seren, you have three minutes.
I was sent the updated memo this afternoon. Reading it, I could only think of how chilling it must feel for the most vulnerable employees of the city. No firm's support or guidance was given for the situations they must fear the most. Family member detained? Talk to your supervisor. DACA recipient? So far, nothing bad has happened to any of them, so you're probably fine. Afraid to come to work? Talk to your supervisor to review your options, if available. Detained by ICE? Please make sure your family calls your supervisor so they can review your options. Obviously, every situation is going to be a little different, but as that memo stands, there is no guidance given to those supervisors, which leaves the door open to wildly varying outcomes just depending on who your manager happens to be. I also wanted to talk quickly about question eight, the refusal to notify public if ICE is active nearby. It was specifically mentioned a phone call. The question I had was, why is the assumption that someone calling and asking this question is necessarily undocumented? This is now a world where US citizens are carrying their passports if they're Hispanic-presenting. Every Latino in Washington County wants to avoid ICE regardless of their immigration status. And to disallow city employees from answering a simple yes or no question over the phone based on the assumption that this caller might possibly be undocumented? It smells a lot like presuming someone guilty on no evidence whatsoever. No one is asking you to require reporting, but to explicitly forbid it is not a good When you ran for office, you took on a responsibility for your constituents. I imagine that you never imagined your term would look like this. But you are now in unprecedented times, and how you handle them will be remembered. Probably not by the history books, although maybe, if you choose to take a stand, but by us, we'll remember. We'll remember if you chose to roll over in the face of state-sponsored racial violence. We will remember your cowardice. In closing, I just want to read something to you. It will be lightly edited for length. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. Prudence will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes."
Thank you, Seren.
It is our right, is our duty to throw off such a government.
Seren. Fernando, hold on one second. The next person on deck is Sandra Perreira. Sandra Perreira. And then on deck is Yasslin Lopez. Fernando, you have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. And I appreciate the time for me to come up here and, you know, talk a little bit about what, you know, I've run into in my life. I'm 74 years old, and I was born in the state of Texas. And I was raised, by the time I was nine and 10 years old in the state of Texas, we were out in the fields picking cotton alongside the African-American brothers and sisters and the H2A workers from Mexico that were brought in to work in the fields. I did that for a few years, and then we decided to come to Oregon to find a better life. So we migrated to Oregon in 1964, and we lived in the labor camps all around Washington County and Clackamas County. But back in those times, you know, in 64, things were not as clear as they are today. There was a lot of hidden, I ran into a small wall of discrimination in my living in the area of Washington County back then. I remember one afternoon that three young kids grabbed ahold of me and told me, because of the color of my skin, they gave me a beating that it lasted for quite a while. And that was my welcome to Oregon. It's been a long, long, long road, you know, here living in Oregon. But I can't believe that we are living under these Gestapo, you know, tactics that are going on against all of us that are brown and stuff, that we're putting up with that kind of stuff. We cannot put up with that. I now have brought my passport with me, you know. I've had it put away, although I don't travel, I just have it for the heck of it. But I now, my wife, who is Anglo-Saxon, did not want me to come to this event and has tried to talk me out of going to other events and trying to talk me out of going out and doing, looking for ICE events and stuff, because I've done some, I've gotten some training. But she's afraid that I won't come back because of the color of my skin. That's the reality of where we're all at, you know. And we want you folks to see if you can improve the system, or I've got an idea, is that we need to all get together as a state instead of these, we have meetings here, we have one in Cornelius yesterday, Forest Grove last week, but we need to come together and work as a group, otherwise, you know, we will be a lost cause and
Thank you, Fernando.
We won't get things done.
Thank you. Yasslin Lopez, you can come up to the desk on the left-hand side. Melody Furman, you're on deck. And Sandra, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Councilor Sinclair and Councilor Salgado. It's super nice to see you guys again. My name is Sandra Perreira, and I am also one of the organizers that went to the state yesterday with Barry, who's over there. I spoke to legislators, and they're working on laws to protect us, but that protection is not coming soon enough. It won't be until February until we see those bills, and it's just not soon enough. We need local government to do the work to make sure we're protected before help comes from the state. Do you know how disgusting it is to go to work and to hear that one of your students, one of your sixth-grade students is left alone in this country because both of their parents have been abducted? Taken? Kidnapped? Do you know how disgusting it is to hear of a sixth-grade girl who had to hide her second-grade brother because ICE was outside of their house and a man was screaming? Do you know how scary that is to hear from children, that they're scared and they're witnessing these traumas? We need to make ICE as uncomfortable and as scared as my Latino community is to go outside, and we need your help for that. Help us create those roadblocks. It is your duty to protect the citizens of Hillsborough. Every day that you do not do something is a day that my community suffers. Y para mi gente latina, no se rindan. Juntos somos fuertes y no vamos a dejar que esos desgraciados que nos odian por el color de nuestro piel ganen.
Gracias, Sandra. Melody Furman, you can take the desk on the right-hand side of the room. And Yasslin, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is
Hang on one second. If you could press the button again to make sure the mic is on. There you go, you're all set.
Hi, my name is Yasslin Lopez. I'm 15 years old. I go to high school, and thank you for everybody here for coming. I'm here to speak for the people who can't and for my community. Some of the things I've been seeing online of ICE harassing people, breaking out car windows, following people, and going around neighborhoods, that's harassment. I just hope you guys can side with us, because I'm so scared to come home one day from school and not be able to see my parents ever again. It doesn't matter the color of our skin, we're still people. Nothing's wrong with us. We operate the same air. I just want my community to be safe and not have to worry about anything. We shouldn't be unsafe in our homes. Some people aren't even working because they're so afraid of coming out. These people with masks, taking them with no ID, showing we're not criminals. We're just people who moved here so we could have a better life. Being undocumented is not a crime. I just want my family and friends and everybody in my community to be safe and return home to their loved ones waiting for them. I just don't understand how ICE can just rip innocent families apart. Thank you for everybody for showing up.
Thank you, Yasslin. Melody, you're next, but hold on, hold tight. Vern Parsley, you're up next. And Ahmed, you're on deck. Melody, you have three minutes.
I was born and raised here. My family has been here for 35 years. I deeply loved this city once, but I do not recognize this place anymore. I find it interesting that the police response portion of your working sessions keeps being put at the end, when you know that you won't get to it in your first hour, when the most community members will be present. I know that you know that that is why we are here. We do not care about the intricacies of funding grants right now. We want to hear about HPD's inaction. I also find it shameful and frankly pathetic that Jim Coleman is not here to face us. He was not here two weeks ago, he's not here tonight. I am here to demand that you hold him accountable for this department's inaction in the face of these terrorists in our community. Inaction is complicity. Inaction is cooperation. You cannot tell us out of one side of your mouth that this is a sanctuary city, and then out of the other side, tell us all of the ways that you are doing nothing to protect our community and stop the illegal activity taking place here. Two weeks ago, the very day that we were here, the FBI warned that people impersonating ICE are abducting, extorting, assaulting, and raping people under the cover of ICE's tactics. And yet, this department still refuses to do even the barest amount of due diligence to ensure that these terrorists are acting under the authority that they claim. Last meeting, I heard you, Councilor Salgado, ask a community member if we expect our police department to stand between this community and ICE. And quite frankly, I do. They swore an oath to this community, not to ICE. We, our taxes pay their salary, ICE does not. You also asked, you also said that ICE expects this police department to help them, and quite frankly, I don't care. If this police department was not cooperating with ICE, ICE would have no such expectation of them. If this police department was holding ICE accountable to our state and federal laws, they would know not to expect anything but hassle when they enter our city limits. Instead, they are allowed to act with impunity, and to me, that is cooperating with ICE. I'm here to demand action. You have jurisdiction over our police department. I demand that you stop with the mealy-mouthed excuses of what you cannot do. Hold this department accountable for their inaction. I demand that they respond to 911 calls.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a question. I know that we're not supposed to comment after But my name was called out, and there was inaccuracies mentioned here. I feel like there's an Okay, well, I just want to state that that quote was inaccurate from that person.
Next, we have Vern. And Ahmed, you're on the desk on the right-hand side. And on deck is Breen Natalia.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. I was born here in 1958. This is my community. Thank you, my community. You guys are part of the community as well. Thank you for listening to us tonight. Mix it up a little, I'm going to start out with a quick, short poem. Laws as we read in ancient sages have been cobwebs in all ages. Cobwebs for little flies are spread, and laws for little folks are made. But if an insect of renown, hornet or beetle, wasp or drone, be caught in quest of sport or plunder, the flimsy fetter flies in sunder. So that was written in 1758 by James Beatty. So I often think about what kind of problems did he have in the day back in 1758 that come up realizing that laws were written for little people, not insects of renown? And here we are today. I often ponder, you know, other than him spinning in his grave right now, thinking and seeing what he would, how he would react to and seeing what he would, how he would react to people being snatched off the streets for nothing more than their skin color in this country. And it's a, it's approved of the highest court that, you know, that's a perfectly acceptable cause to pull people off the street. So in the emergency declaration, one of the resolved statements is implementing legally defensible support programs. That caught my ears and eyes and I kept, I started writing a bunch of comments down and I'm on board with that. I'd like to help vet that. So what is legally defensible support programs? We need something with teeth in it, something that people can do, they can feel comfortable about taking a stand. We need to go toe-to-toe against the federal government like the state has done at the, at the local level. You know, I want the city attorney to go toe-to-toe and then be afraid of facing him in court. I mean, that's what we need. That is a kind of a level of activity we need here. Lastly, it's been widely reported that out of the 600 people that ICE detained in Chicago over a two-month period, only 16 had records. That's a 3% success rate. So they were willing to, you know, Kristi Noem, Tom Homan and Reich Vice Chancellor, Stephen Smith were willing to, you know, go through a sorting exercise of people, of human beings, living, breathing human beings, pulling them off the street for nothing more than a 3% success rate, when we were led to believe at the very beginning, they were going after known criminals. Okay, so that's really, really very sad. They were willing to disrupt or destroy human lives to achieve that 3%. And again, don't condone, condone that. The lady who spoke before me, she, she said, we need, we need something bigger. We need to go toe-to-toe with people. Thank you.
Thank you Vern. Bree Natalia, you can come up. And Ahmed, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ahmed. I've lived in Hillsborough for maybe 36 years. First and foremost, I want to tell the Hispanic brothers and sisters that I am in solidarity with them 100%, 100%. Second of all, I want to say quite clearly, elections have consequences. We must vote out Donald Trump. We must vote out the Republican Party. ICE is a stick, S-T-I-C-K. Donald Trump is the hand that beats us over the head with that stick. We must vote these people out. We must do it. We are continually talking about the reality of the color of the skin of the people who are being put upon. Unfortunately, this is not new. I was born in 1957 in New Orleans, Louisiana. If you want me to tell you about racism, let's get together. I'll tell you about it. This is not new. It's just different. Have you ever heard of a slave patrol? ICE is the new slave patrol of 2025. We have to change things by voting out Donald Trump and the Republican Party. We must do that. I do believe that the city council, that the city manager, that attorney, I think they're doing what they can do, you can do more, think outside of the box. Thank you for what you're doing, but think outside of the box. Because guess what? Donald Trump does not care about laws. He does not. We are a nation of laws, but he continuously finds a way to get around following the law. He does what he wants to whomever he wants and let's just see where the chips fall. That's Donald Trump. If you want to change things, continue on the road that you are, but vote this guy out. Vote out the Republican Party if you want to make changes in this country. We find these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal, but they meant all white men were created equal. That's what they meant. We've got to get past the color of our skin thing. We are human beings. We are one race of people. We all contribute to this country. I've served in the military. Hispanic people have served in the military. Hispanic people have died in the military. Black people have died in the military. We must stand together as human beings, not as damn races of colors. We are one race, human race. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea C., you can come and take a seat at the desk on the right-hand side. Andrea C. And then Manny Chavez, you are on deck. Bree, is it Bree or Bri?
Bree.
Bree, thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you and thank you Sinclair for your work with Victor Cruz. I'm here to request a call to action to put pressure on David Kuhnhausen. He's the interim director of Portland permitting development. Everyone, David Kuhnhausen, email him, call his cell phone. Under their own planning and zoning codes on Portland, 33.700.040, they have power for the reconsideration of land use approvals. So situations where land use approvals may be reconsidered, when there's one or more conditions of the land use approval, such as the holding detainees over 12 hours, or if there's been substantially increased in intensity from what was approved. Or if there's substantially increased the intensity of its operations, that's considered violations. And they have 60 days after the first violation to reconsider the permit. That 60 days was yesterday. So put pressure on David to reconsider the land use permit and essentially revoke it. I know people in like the ACLU are saying, we need to keep this processing center here, but there are other avenues to help immigrants with their routine check-ins. We could increase virtual appointments into Tacoma detention facilities. We could increase public transportation to and from Portland to Tacoma. We could add daycare subsidies for folks who can't, who need to watch their kids while they travel for these appointments. And we could also add subsidies for folks who need to take time off to attend these appointments three hours away. Okay, this facility, I've been protesting it for six months. It's not humane. I've been to Tacoma too. It's a scary place. And if your kids, close your ears, two men have died at the Tacoma facility, Jose Sanchez and Charles Leo Daniel. We are potentially sending people to their death sentence. Okay? The convenience of a processing center is not worth the death of our people. In the Trump administration, there's been nearly as many deaths in these ICE facilities as the entire Biden administration and we have three more years of this. Okay? Please put pressure on David Kuhnhausen to revoke the ICE permit. It's not worth it. And hearing these testimonies, I'm, I'm tired of this and I want this to end as well. And I think you all do too. And, and one last remark, I, I know you might be scared of legal prosecution. MLK was arrested over 30 times. Okay, sometimes as leaders, you gotta do what you gotta do and this might be that time. Okay. Thank you.
Manny Chavez, you can take a seat at the desk on the left. And Andrea, oh, sorry, Chuck Gonzalez, you're on deck. And Andrea, you have three minutes.
Can I just push this?
Actually, you're live now, so you don't know
Okay, I'm gonna sound a different.
You're so good. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Hello, I just wanted to start out and say that I was born and raised here and have lived here for most of my life. I'm concerned about the recent ICE activity in my city. This is my town, my community. These are my neighbors and yet I am scared to go out to Suca's imports 10 minutes away from me. I think I speak for a lot of us when I say we are tired of terrorists leeching off of our taxpayers' money, criminals who are ignoring the law, terrorizing our home, strangers from out of state kidnapping my neighbors. I, a United States citizen, am scared in my own home. I'm scared right now. I'm paranoid of every single car around me. I take different routes to make sure I'm not being followed because I know my own police, who are living off of our taxes, will not help me as they've made their stance very clear. There's many times I wanted to leave to be with my father, who was deported from here years ago in this town, but this is my city, my home. I'm not leaving. I am tired. I've been advocating for immigrant rights since I was a child. My mother was advocating for immigrant rights. I am now an adult and I am tired. I am tired of seeing posts of people putting together ICE Watch groups to protect our students. I am tired of mass criminals kidnapping the very people who built this town. I am tired. I understand that you offer your condolences and support us. I voted, I voted for you because I believe in you. But when the history books are written, when everything is said and done, we will all remember the action you took. Because I know, I and many of us here will say, we did everything we could. Because when everything is over, and there will be a day when all of this is over, what will you be able to say that, that you did? What will you say that you did during this time? I've said it my whole life, the government works for us, not the other way around. And we, as a city, need to start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Gonzalez, you can take a seat at the desk on the right-hand side. Norma Ramirez, you are on deck. And Manny, you have three minutes.
I don't know if anyone here really knows me that much. I spoke in the last council meeting. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Dirk because he helped so much with the situation I'm going through right now. I also want to thank Councilor Sinclair and Councilor Christian because they personally came up to me and they spoke with me over the weekends and they were the ones who gave me some more information about stuff. I just want to say that I'm a little disappointed that it took this long to set the emergency state. And I just want so much more to change in such little time. I know a lot of us want so much to change. And I don't know if people know, I've started a GoFundMe for people in this community that don't have much and people who've lost their families to immigration. And I'm really trying my best to support everyone. And it's hard as a student, as an athlete. So much people have messaged me and asked for my help, which as the human I am, I want to give as much money as I possibly could to everyone. But I know the world that we live in is, that's not going to happen. I'm not going to be able to help everyone. I do want to say to you, Mayor Pace, help the community that helped you sit in office, the community that helped you get there, helped you get in power. I want you to have their backs now because they were the ones that helped you sit up there, helped everyone there, sitting up there as a council, helped the community that helped you guys because without them, you guys wouldn't be there. And now they're begging for you guys, which they shouldn't have to. They're begging for you guys to do something and actually help all of them. So please, help the community that helped you guys. I also want to say that I didn't speak for myself. I spoke for my friends. I spoke for my family and I spoke for my community. So when people say, how do you feel being famous? I don't, I guess I wouldn't say I like it because that's not the reason I did it. I didn't speak for myself. I didn't speak for me to get famous. I spoke to let everyone know how, I want all the kids to speak up with me. I want everyone that is my age to sit up here and speak up. But thank you guys for your time.
Norma Ramirez, you can come and take a seat at the desk on the left-hand side. Pedro Garcia, you're on deck. And Chuck Gonzalez, you have three minutes.
I have to follow him, are you kidding? He's like the most, one of the most famous kids in the nation now. Thank you. No, no pressure or anything. Great work. My name's Chuck Gonzalez and my father was a grand picker, was a cotton picker in Texas, Fernando. He was, he came here, he lives in Robstown. And to this day, I still have a piece of Texas cotton in my truck outside that I carry around. So I come from a family of immigrants. I'm a former business owner here in the city of Hillsborough. I ran a gym, had to close it down in 2020 because of COVID. It was just too difficult. But I moved here from Alaska and I came down to get on with the Portland Police Bureau or any police department that would hire me because I have a degree in criminal justice. And I've had these books out for a long time now. I have three sons in the Hillsborough School District. And these books have been in hiding for about 30 years. And I just pulled them out and I have not seen this article for about 30 years. This is an article that I clipped out in 1996. And this was a court decision from the US Supreme Court. And with this ruling, all cops are free to harass any and all black people as long as they have in hand a complaint that a black person has committed a crime. This occurred in New York City in the mid 90s. So this is nothing new. So first of all, I back the badge. I back the blue. I back our military. I'm very pro-America. I'm incredibly conservative and I'm also Latino. I'm also Hispanic or whatever you call us these days. I understand that right now Border Patrol and ICE have an incredibly, impossibly difficult job on their hands because I left this state in 2020 in part because of a conversation with you, Mayor Pace. We met and I was going to run for Hillsborough City Council and I changed my mind to move to Texas and I was there for two years where I saw 10,000 people illegally cross the border and destroy Texas border towns and destroy so many places in Texas. And I lived there for two years and I saw this. And I had to move back here for personal reasons and I came back to a sanctuary city. And right now, I'm so torn because I have a massive Hispanic family and I'm also very pro-police. And I know that the Hillsborough police are doing everything that they can and I know that it takes time and you guys are doing what you can, but this is not going to happen overnight. And yes, we need to protect our borders. We need to protect our citizens. We need to be America first, but we also need to be compassionate for what is going on here. I just saw ICE pull guns on two kids in Dutch Bros, for God's sakes. And I know it feels like Nazi, but this is not Nazi. This is Nazi. My friend Alter Weiner, who wrote this book, who died and was killed.
Thank you Chuck.
That was Nazi. This is not. Thanks you guys.
Norma? Okay, one second. Pedro Garcia, you can take a seat on the desk on the right. And then on deck, we have Cecilia Giron or Giron. Cecilia Giron is on deck. Norma, you have three minutes.
Buenas noches, gracias por la oportunidad de hablar aquí. Mi nombre es Norma Ramirez, tengo un negocio en la calle 10 y he sido afectada directamente. Creo que todos de alguna manera estamos siendo afectados por toda esta situación. Pero esperemos que ustedes hagan algo y algo pronto porque la gente tiene miedo. Mis clientes tienen miedo, mis empleados tienen miedo. Yo soy ciudadana pero ahora traigo mi pasaporte porque con todo lo que está pasando ya no sabe uno pues si uno también pudiera tener algún problema. Pero si estoy aquí hablando es más que nada para hacerle saber a mucha gente que nuestra comunidad hispana es muy importante tanto para esta ciudad como para el país. Ellos son unos trabajadores pues muy, trabajan muy fuerte, trabajan en los campos, con unas condiciones horribles, con una paga muy baja. Y son muy importantes porque son los que nos traen nuestra comida a nuestra mesa gracias a ellos. También muchos de ellos hacen sus, sus taxes y no tienen derecho a ningún crédito. Entonces, si mucha gente piensa que ellos toman ventaja de este país, no es cierto. Este país está tomando ventaja de ellos. Y ahorita estoy hablando por ellos porque algún día yo también fui legal. Pero estoy aquí para seguir trabajando duro por nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you, Norma. Gracias, Norma. Cecilia, you can take a seat at the desk on the left-hand side. On deck, we have Alexandra Perez and Pedro Garcia. You have three minutes.
So I wanted to start by saying that I don't believe in any of you. Y'all have failed. The truth is, we as a community need to be united because we need to resist. Resistance only comes from unity. Unity only comes from education. And education brings awareness to the things that are affecting our community because they have increased ICE's budget by about 300%. That is about, at its current state, about $75 billion. The Marines, part of the military, right? They're at $53 billion. So ICE has a bigger budget than the Marines. I know that they're not going to do anything. We are. Because the power lies in the people. When my house burned down, it was not them that helped rebuild. It was not them that provided any support materially or financially. It was my community. It was our community. I know what everyone here is capable of because I have seen it. They want us to be living in fear. We are not fearful of them. They need to fear us. We are the ones that give all of these people here power. We give them power. Power to the people, not the government. It's always been like that. They want us to believe that there's no money for our education because education is knowledge. Knowledge is power. They don't want us to be aware of how to bring change, of how to organize. They want us to be smart enough to work their jobs, but we are more than workers. We are poets. We are writers. We are everything you could imagine. And our legal status does not matter in the slightest. It never has. There is strength in diversity. I know a lot of you have probably seen Bugs Life, but the ant, or sorry, the grasshopper in it says, "It's not about the food, it's about power." If one ant rises against us and realizes that there's 100 of them for every one of us, there goes our way of life. Because they know we are the ones giving them power. Y para mi gente latina, venimos de una raza, de una gente que siempre ha peleado por lo justo. Nosotros nos deshacimos de la esclavitud antes de los Estados Unidos. Nosotros hemos peleado por la justicia cada paso. Nosotros participamos en los disturbios de los zootzoots. Participamos en los disturbios de baño cuando los estaban bañando con químicos. Tiene que haber un cambio. We have to change. We cannot continue things as they are. Police is useless. If you want change, give one need an education. The police doesn't prevent crime.
Thank you, Pedro.
Education does.
Thank you. Alexandra Perez, you can take a seat on the right-hand side. Thank you. And Cecilia, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for giving me that opportunity to speak. My name is Cecilia Giron. I am a resident of Hillsborough and I've been a resident of Washington County for over 30 years. First, I want to thank you all for your time and also for taking action by, by committing some funds and resources to support our community. That commitment matters. We are living through very difficult times. But what we are facing today did not begin recently. These challenges have affected our immigrant communities for generations, dating back to the foundation of this great nation, to not forget. Today, I'm here respectfully urge you, not only the city of Hillsborough, but as leaders, that you can influence your colleagues, the county and the state of Oregon. Not only to declare a state of emergency, but also to develop a comprehensive emergency plan to protect the constitutional human rights of every individual, regardless of their legal status. Our communities cannot wait. We need to be clear and we also need to have transparency and strategies to protect and safeguard our future generations. We're not going nowhere. We've been here. We are here. The economic stability of our city and our state and the safety and well-being of all residents in our beautiful city of Hillsborough needs you more than ever. There is an urgent need for local and state laws that protect our immigrant communities. And I just want to share that we have our neighbor state, California, and other states that have been taking action. It has enacted to strengthen civil rights, protection for immigrants. For example, California's Transparency Review of Just Transfers and Hold Truth Act. California's Ratio and Identity Profiling Act, AB 953. California Transparency and Responsibility Using State Tools, the Trust Act.
Cecilia, thank you very much.
Thank you for standing today with us.
Alexandra, you have